Welcome everyone to the Tuesday, January 24th, 2023, Tom Water, the Council of Work Session. And I believe I have all of the council members in that, so we will stand with the role call. John, do we have any changes to the agenda or any additions? None that I'm aware of. So, all right. So we're going to jump right into it. So we're going to start out with the energy on conservation update. And Dan Smith, you're going to start this off this evening. So I will turn it over to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, good evening. Tonight, we have Hunter Hessing. Hopefully, I said that name right? He's the Outreach Manager with Puget Sound Energy. And he's here to give you an overview of Puget Sound Energy's residential and commercial programs, including the all the incentives and rebate programs, energy product offerings, and a better understanding of utility assistance programs for basically council's awareness as well as our community. So with that, I'll turn it over to Hunter.
Hey, thanks, Dan. Just checking. Can everybody hear me? Okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, we're quality of the audio is good?
Yes.
All right. Well, thanks, everyone, for having me again. As Dan mentioned, my name's Hunter. I work with Puget Sound Energy. I'm joined today in the audience by my two counterparts, Christine and Shannon. So we'll all be hanging together on the question and answer at the end. I understand that I have in totality for the presentation, question and answer is 30 minutes. Is that right? Okay, gotcha. It's a I'm gonna do the the best that I can here to to make things interesting and give you enough depth on the programs that PSC has and the the clean energy goals that our utility has with without being too brief, which is challenging because there's a lot of content here. So if there are any questions afterwards, after the question and answer, Tommy is is a great person to ask those to. I'm not Tommy Winslow, as you might see. I actually am Tommy's counterpart up in Watkins County and would be island. Tommy is the Outreach Manager for Thurston County, but he couldn't be here today due to an urgent family matter. So thoughts go out to Tommy and his family. So my understanding is someone was going to share the presentation for me. Is that right? I have it too. I can I that was just what Alyssa had shared with me.
Dan, do you know?
Yeah, actually, Hunter, if you could share your screen, that would be great.
Yep, that works. All right, let's get into share mode here. PowerPoint. Now, are people seeing the the presentation or they seeing my notes?
My
Your notes.
The notes. Yeah, okay, sorry about that. Let's try it a different way. Let's do a screen too. Now you get to see my all my chats. And then we'll log the prestation. How about now? Are we done?
Gold in.
All right, great. So I'm going to talk about the overarching PSC Clean Energy Strategy. And then I'm going to get into some of our different programs that we have for residential customers, small to medium business customers, and our larger commercial and industrial customers. So I thought I'd start with the with a quote, and I think this really embodies what PSC is all about and what our direction is here at PSC. And it's won by our CEO, Mary Kip. And really, our our clean energy vision is we know that our customers want clean energy. We follow the science, the transition to clean energy is the right thing to do for our planet. We really don't have all the answers as to how we're going to get there yet. But we believe it's possible with the right combination of legislative, regulatory, commercial, and technological advances. We also know that a lot of important work is had as we balance these clean energy goals with our customers' need for uncompromised reliability and safety. So these are really the things that we look at is we want to do things cleaner. But we also need to to maintain that that reliability and that safety. For I'm going to cover this briefly, but for a deeper dive on our Clean Energy Plan, you can see that at PSC. Excuse me, CleanEnergyPlan.pse.com. So all the details there, you can get as deep as you want. But essentially, you may have heard by 2045, PSC is aspiring to be a beyond net zero company. So you know, what does that really mean beyond net zero com- energy company? And what that means is it's both looking at the electric side of our of our business and the gas side of our business as well as internal operations. So Clean Energy Transformation Act was passed by our Governor Inslee, which mandated that all utilities in Watkins State, PSC included, we had to be 80% clean and carbon neutral by 2030 on on the electric supply. But we've gone a step further, and we've targeted to reduce our own carbon emissions to net zero and even go beyond that by helping other sectors to enable carbon reduction across the state of Washington. Examples of that are promoting electric vehicles residentially, commercially for fleet, and also maritime shipping with the tote marine out of our Tacoma LNG facility. This addition includes our operations. And we really do believe that natural gas pipeline infrastructure is a key element to the clean energy transition, not only to leave level out peak energy demand like we saw in the cold snap during the recent month of December, but also to deliver carbon and carbon neutral energy through those pipes. So PSC, for example, is beginning to use bio gas through methane capture at Cedar Hills landfill in Clickittack County. And we're currently on contract to explore the use of hydrogen with a pilot in Tacoma. So these just show some of the milestones, you know, 2025, there will be no coal, no more coal strip in PSC's generation portfolio, carbon neutral by 2030, and the very the very big goal of being 100% clean by 2045. So that's what PSC is doing on our side as a as a electric and gas utility. But we can't do this alone. You know, we have various programs. We know our customers want clean energy, but we need them to join us as well. We need them to install efficient appliances to make upgrades to their homes and businesses. So I'm going to talk about some residential options now. Why would you participate in in energy efficiency? Well, you can save money and reduce energy. The more energy efficient your home becomes, the lower your bills can get. And we're here to to help everyone achieve their their energy related goals. So this is, you don't feel like you have to read. This is more of a visual piece here. Obviously, a house and all the blue items are I energy efficient appliances or upgrades for which PSC has rebates for, which are cash back either mailed or instant rebates that reduce the upfront cost of making these investments. Some of these things have additional benefits that you might not imagine, like a yeah, smart thermos. Yes, a smart thermostat can save you energy in your home, but it can also give you peace of mind by having control of your heating and cooling in your house and monitoring of it while you're on vacation, say, in the winter time. So really, the next step here is to learn more. To learn more is to check out our website, pse.com/rebates, or to call one of our energy advisors, which are energy experts that man email and phone Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and their number is on the next slide. But there's things here like Duckless heat pumps that do heating and cooling at a very, very low cost in terms of how much you pay versus how much heating and cooling you get. And on the far left is is a actually a smart water heater that also uses heat pump technology, where you can get actually instant rebates on those at Home Depot through a program worked on with them. So really trying to make it as easy as possible for people to save energy and reduce their their carbon emissions. So when we look at this clean energy transition, you know, PSC created the Efficiency Boost Program to hire, offer higher rebates on all of those upgrades in the previous slide to income qualified customers that are more in that moderate income segment. So this is 90% area median income or less. We found there was a gap between our normal rebates and then the programs that we offer for folks that are 60% or 80% area median income or less. Those were people that, you know, they made enough where they couldn't qualify for those bill assistance programs, but not quite enough to be able to make the upgrade even with the rebate. So this is an option to get higher rebates on all of the aforementioned item equipments and 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 measures like that Duckless heat pump. We're boosting boosting those rebates, increasing them. And really, the way to get started is to refer to the income guidelines for moderate income customers. You search Efficiency Boost PSC on Google, it'll take you right to the webpage, or you can call one of those energy advisors, and they will help you determine eligibility, give you a referral for a contractor that is vetted by PSC and can give you the rebate as an instant discount off the cost of the quote and help you fill out any paper, really makes paperwork almost unnecessary. It's like not even a task. So we really recommend that route. One cool thing that I wanted to mention is brand new. People may be aware that PSC has a marketplace. It's like Amazon for energy efficiency products, pse.com/marketplace. But we've created one for this moderate income program where if, again, you you are eligible, both income and equipment eligibility requirements, you can get a smart thermostat like Google Nest or EcoBee for $1. Free shipping. So I think that's a really, a really something that we can actually go out into our communities and talk about. And this is brand new. I think it got out on our website about a week ago. So I don't have time to talk about all of the different programs that PSC offers to folks that are having challenges making these upgrades to their home or paying their bills. But the one of the primary of those is Home Energy Lifeline, which we provide assistance up to $1,000 a year in a credit to help folks pay down their balance and and get their pills, their bills paid, both gas and electric. It's PSC funded. There's no personal documentation needed. These programs are implemented by community action agencies in partnership with Puget Sun Energy. So we fund them. The applications are processed and appointments are made, and funding is provided by these third parties. The call to action here is to visit our website, contact your local agency, or you can start your application online. One that's not pictured here but is a really great program, I'm a big fan of, is Home Weatherization Assistance. This is, as is the Bill Assistance, 80% area median income or less. So these are what PSC considers are are lower income programs to to help folks on that end of the spectrum. And through this program, you can get free weatherization and heating upgrades as determined through an initial audit by one of those community partners that has experts in in energy usage and and home upgrades. Call to action there is to go to our website, find your local agency and contact them to get started. I don't expect folks to to read this whole slide. This is just wanted to highlight the array of options that PSC has when it comes to clean energy products for individual customers. This doesn't include efficiency upgrades incentives for small and large businesses. I'll get into that a little later. Shout out to to City of Tom Water for participating in our Green Direct program. Appreciate that that partnership there. So when we look at the different categories of of renewable energy products that PSC has, starting on the left side, you have these these matching programs. And that's green power, solar choice, and carbon balance. All of these programs allow customers of of different types and in different situations to be able to move further faster, right? We talked about the milestones and the steps PSC is going to take to move towards a cleaner fuel mix for our portfolio, how we produce the electricity that we send on the transmission lines and distribution lines to our customers. But some people want to move further faster, and there these are some options for them to do that. Matching is the many times the most economical. You don't have to have any equipment installed or maintained. Essentially, all three of these programs, you pay a little extra on the bill. Green Power and Solar Choice are on the electric side, carbon balance on the gas. And PSC goes out and buys renewable energy, or in the case of carbon balance, carbon offsets on your behalf. And then the customer, you are paying more on the bill, but you get the benefit of being able to say, look, I'm I'm actually carbon neutral for for my energy, my electric or or gas or both usage. The call to action there is to visit our website, sign up on our website, or if there is a business or a cluster of businesses or a government that wants to enroll in any of these programs, Tommy can help you by getting a proposal, something prepared for you that you can look over with whoever the decision maker is for that. For that, in the middle, we have replace. These are programs, Community Solar and Renewable Natural Gas. Folks might be familiar with the project on Olympia High School where PSC, you can actually participate by energy and it replaces the renewable energy replaces and reduces the amount that you you buy from PSC. The setup with the Community Solar, I'll discuss that is in a minute. But you are paying you're paying a little bit, and then you're receiving a reduction of of some amount. The final is generate. That's our longest existing program. That means you install renewables, either, most commonly, solar photovoltaic panels on your home or business, and every kilowatt hour that you produce is one less that you have to buy from PSC. We call that net metering. And there's other incentives that are available through the federal and state governments for that. So on on Community Solar, the program is voluntary, and we've made enrollment very simple. You can subscribe on a per share basis at $20 a share, which is automatically added to the bill. The normal iteration of the program does require a subscription one year, which, if you cancel before that, there is a penalty to that. The ener- energy generated by your shares is credited to the bill anywhere from $7 to $11 a month, depending on how much electricity that array generates. So it varies a little bit. Overall, the net is still a cost, but for some people that want to be able to participate in a project that they can see on their drive to work or to pick up their kids at school, this is a really great option. One thing I wanted to mention too is that PSC in the in the pursuit of equity in the clean energy transition, 25% of the shares about at each one of these sites have been reserved for free to individuals that have lower income, 200% or less of the federal poverty level. So they receive the credit, but they don't have to pay the cost, and they can get one share per person. There are some shares that are still available for the Bonnie Lake site. More information about that is at pse.com/solarforall. So just to quickly touch on some of our commercial programs, we really have a program for every business type and upgrade from industrial manufacturing to skyscraper offices. You know, we're here to help businesses save energy and reduce their bill. I'm going to talk about a few of them today, but for more information, pse.com-mybusiness has the whole portfolio there. So when we look at common upgrades to save energy, lighting is a big one. For custom projects in existing commercial buildings to retrofit interior or exterior lighting, we have this Business Lighting Incentive Program. I'm realizing that some of these, now that I look at some of these numbers are out of date, so I'll update you with the with the correct numbers after this presentation. But I I would say the thing to focus on is just any project that is more than replacing a bulb that might include rewiring, it might include entire fixture changes. It might include lighting controls. This is the program for for that kind of change to get up to 70% of the project cost covered. We look at through a workbook, an Excel workbook, what you have installed now, how much electricity that system uses, and what your contractor or you are proposing to install, then the difference between which we multiply by a certain amount, that's the grant. Moving on to lighting to go, we work with participating distributors, lighting distributors like Platte Electric to offer customers that just need to change a bulb or two instant discounts on those common LED lights. For anything that doesn't fall into a neat bucket that we've created, we can potentially incentivize any we call it, it's kind of jargon here, sorry, measures, an upgrade of some sort, either equipment or or insulation that exceeds code or saves energy and passes our cost effectiveness criteria. So some examples of those are on the left. Insulation upgrades, high efficiency chillers, and things like that. Some people may be aware of the Clean Buildings Law. I can't see everybody, but anybody heard of this? It's kind of a big deal. House Bill 1257. Most people here are are elected officials, so I'm I'm glad that many folks have heard of this, but a lot of building operators have not. And this is a mandate given by by the governor, implemented by Department of Commerce, but PSC as the energy utility. We think some folks are going to have trouble understanding what the requirements are and time to comply. So so we want to give them the tools that they can, that we can to do that. It applies to existing commercial buildings greater than 50,000 square feet, soon to be 20,000 square feet or larger. And essentially, it sets these targets for energy usage per amount of area. The the jargon on the slide says energy usage intensity. That's what that means is energy per per square foot, and they're going to have to improve a certain amount based on the type of building. And they're going to have to do that a year before with tracking all of those dates that are on the slide there. So you can imagine for large buildings that have to do that by 2025, that's only two years from now. I mean, these deadlines are coming up really fast. So for folks that that don't do this, there are financial penalties. So we really want to make sure that we get the word out and provide any resources that exist. Industrial, agricultural, and those under economic hardship are excluded from this. So there are some off ramps.
Can I can I ask a, I was gonna ask a question about that, Hunter, if you don't mind?
Yeah, sure.
So so when that passed, I remember looking it up and seeing the exemptions for economic hardship. So that would that wouldn't apply to like the brewery, for example, right? Because that building has largely been, for lack of a better word, abandoned. Correct? So we couldn't use that as some sort of leverage point with the owners at all because they would be exempt from that. Is that right?
What's the location that you you said brewery?
Yeah, so in in town here in in Tom Water, we have what was the Olympia Brewery that closed down a number of years ago that has fallen into disrepair and hasn't been utilized for 20 years at this point. I haven't smelled hops from there since I was a kid, so probably so but I I remember reading at the time, like, shoot, this wouldn't apply to that property to where we could have some sort of incentive or stick to require improvements to the building or some kind of retrofitting or anything along those lines.
Oh, because it's kind of, it's an eyesore, essentially?
I mean, it's basically a brown field. I don't know, like, what word would be the best descriptor? Brown, brownfield, abandoned, derelict. Part of it caught on fire.
Right.
Yeah, right. But it sounds like this would 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 very, very likely be exempt from these requirements. I'm sure that John John might know more about that, too, because I I think we had a conversation about this when the bill passed.
Yeah, let me do this. It's Michael asking the question, right?
Yeah.
Okay, let me do this. I'll follow up with my inter- I don't know the answer, but I can follow up and get you an answer.
Okay.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
Okay.
Thanks.
Anybody else?
No, I think we're good.
Okay. Well, I'll keep track and then. So PSC developed for to help those building operators understand the law and how to comply and get resources to help them with the cost of projects. We developed this Clean Building Accelerator Program, which, over four months, is designed to educate facility staff on how to utilize things like Energy Start Portfolio Manager, which many people may have heard of, and some people may have not. How to use things like Energy Cap, which is how PSC delivers energy usage data for whole buildings, you know, provides virtual energy scans, opportunities, kind of prioritized opportunities come out of that for projects or low cost, no cost upgrades. And signing up is as easy as going to pse.com/cleanbuildings. This is a free program that PSC provides to to our customers. So just a timeline of what that typically looks like over, starting with a four month sprint, followed followed by some seminars in the year that follows that four month sprint. Trying to see if there's anything else here. No. And finally, the the last thing I wanted to highlight, this is a big program for my team. The Customer Outreach Team that I work on at PSC, we really do focus our, much of our time and energy on small to medium businesses because they really are the are the heart of our communities. So PSC has this Small Business Direct Install Program where qualifying smallest, small to medium sized businesses can receive a free energy assessment and free installation of specific energy saving products. So we understand small businesses, the reason we we target them with a more of a free direct install offering is because they generally have fewer resources, leaner teams, they're focused on keeping their business, their doors open and producing baking, doing whatever it is that they do. They don't have a lot of time and energy to think about infrastructure, energy efficiency upgrades, and renewable energy. So likely candidates that we work with through this program are retail, offices, restaurants, some churches that are open 40 hours a week, schools, common spaces for multifamily housing as well, apartments and condos. And one of our what is a free energy assessment? You know, we schedule one of our small business energy specialists, and they come out and they do a basic energy walkthrough. The focus is on lighting, but they also look at other things like occupancy sensor potential, and then, you know, faucet or enters that we're all familiar with. But the primary focus is is lighting. To be eligible, customers can be PSC electric or natural gas and or natural gas. Really, the offering is pretty light on the gas side. So if we have, you know, we're dual fuel in City of Tom Water, so not really anything to worry about here. We we need them to be an owner of a small business, so we don't implement this program for Taco, Taco Bell, McDonald's, Burger King. They got to be a small business, and we also exclude banks like Bank of America. 10,000 square feet is is a rough barometer, but not a hard and fast rule for most rate schedules. I would say if they are a small business, send them either to our website or to Tommy, and we can get them set up with an energy assessment. We have a similar program that's also available for small farms and for lodging facilities and hotels that are 150 rooms or less. So just looking at the lighting types that we actually upgrade, you know, going clockwise here, you have your your tubular fluorescent lights, and that that's really the middle right side there is the focus of the program. About 90% of what we do is we go in to businesses that still have fluorescent tubes, eight foot and four foot. We rewire them to take We rewire them to take away the ballast as a user of electricity and a potential failure point. And we install longer lasting, lower energy using LEDs, and it doesn't cost them anything. If they want to install, upgrade any of these other lighting options. Troffers, barn lights, wall packs, metal hall lights, sodium vapor, parking lot full lights. They can still do that and it's still a good deal. It's through a co-pay, but it's not free. They get a proposal that says, here's the cost, here's the rebate, here's your cost after rebate, tells them how much energy they've saved. It's a very easy start to end finish. If you have a business or a group of businesses. That you think that this would be a good fit for. Again, Tommy is a great contact for that. So again, thanks so much for giving me some of your precious time here and letting me fill in for, for Tommy. Any questions that folks have, I'm happy to answer.
Any additional questions?
Yes, Hunter, yes, Mayor, I have a question.
Okay, Councilmember Jefferson.
So Hunter, great information, lots of incentives. How are you getting the word out? To your customers?
That's a great question, Angela. So I work on our communications in our communications, marketing and. Community engagement team. I work hand in hand with our marketing and events team. To help our program managers meet their goals for customer awareness and participation. So outreach works through the community, much of it's face to face, some telephone, some email. We work with our events team to show up at events that people go to. And talk to them about our programs and then our marketing team works through. The common marketing channels that, that a marketing team would, so they do email, they do social media. All of those different, there's ads that are on radio, TV, buses. Any way that we can get in front of folks and let them know what options they have and what the benefits are to them. To get them started on their way.
Okay, do you notice an uptick in, in use?
In use of the, the different programs?
Of your programs, yeah. Is there an uptick? Or is it steady?
Overall, I don't, I don't know the, the answer to that. Actually, there's. Probably a hundred different programs that we have, but. Like in general, over all of those programs, are we noticing a trend of an uptick? I don't know the answer. I could certainly ask though and get back to you.
Okay, thank you.
And Christine or Shannon, if you're on the call, feel free to, to chime in as well.
Yeah, I think that's a great question. You know, the data, I don't have the exact data, but, but I have a little bit of an experiential story I can share. At being new to the company, I did go along on. What we call business call ride where folks go out from Puget Sound Energy. And they approach different businesses throughout the day and we talked to them, we go in, look at their lighting. And we just go out and do like a circle area. I think we did Lacy. Over by the Safeway on, on College and Yelm Highway. And that day alone, we got a lot of businesses that could participate in that. I think Hunter, you gotta help me out here, the small business. Installation.
That was the program I was just talking about, small business direct install and we had. We visited fifty businesses during that, what we call Blitz. And got twenty-three of them signed up for the program and upgraded. There's still a few trickling in through that.
Right, excellent, thank you.
Great, I'll go to Councilmember Delhoff, then Councilmember Snyder.
Thanks Mayor. Hi Hunter, hi Christine. Angela led me to this question is, I remember in some inserts, whether it was part of our. Our PSC bill or separate, right? You gotta, like, how do you compare with your neighbors, right? And thankfully, I've always been great, thank you. But what happens if you're on the other end of that spectrum? Is there like additional follow up with PSC? Right? If someone sees it or someone's not really looking at that of, is there a follow up? Do you have programs or someone searching that or flagging the ones that are not so great compared to their neighbors?
Yeah, that's a great question. Those home energy reports, this is. Liata asked, asking the question. Those energy reports elicit a fairly strong response amongst people. And it's a reason why they are so effective. Is, nobody wants to be a big energy user, right? So it's, it's a behavioral. Comparison that we're making to kind of spur that competitive spirit in folks. Is there anyone that's going and following up to the ones that say you're using more than your neighbors? I don't believe so. I think it's mostly driven by the customer to take additional action based on those emails. So they have, it says, hey, you can go online to our energy center and you can ask some, answer some questions about what you have in your house. And how you operate those things and we'll tell you where you use energy in some ways. Prioritize recommendations for you to save, low cost, no cost. Individual, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, Hunter.
Yeah, in, in terms of having an individual do outreach specifically to those customers, I don't believe.
I mean, I would love to see, thank you for the answer Hunter, and I get it. If you look at the demographics of your customers, right? I'm just seeing if there's any pockets of like maybe isolated seniors. And there's an uptick or something, right? Like, do you have any like identifiers? That could help us identify?
I just lost my.
I'm not going to take that personally.
Sorry.
Can you hear it now?
Sorry there, I'm back. My headset died there. I, I apologize.
Hunter, that actually happens to me quite a bit, so you're fine.
I missed probably, probably last fifteen seconds of what you said.
I also get that a lot as well, Hunter. There's any like nuggets of information, right? Like. One of my jams is looking at like our wastewater treatment. Are there any pockets? We're using that for the epidemiology, right? Looking for like pockets of insecurity or food or health. I'm wondering if there's a way to look at also PSC, if you see an uptick or something in energy use, is something going on with our seniors or elders? So I'm just wondering if you can mine that data and see if there's any anomalies with community members in Tumwater.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm, I'm really happy that you asked that, Liata, because our team is in charge of. Taking the data that our customer insights team collects. From a lot of different sources and then also overlays with our own customer information. We look at, you know, when, when, when the Clean Energy Transformation Act came out. There was this new term that was created called named communities, right? And named communities essentially is, is the state created term that looks at vulnerable populations. And highly impacted communities. Highly impacted community is, you know, what are communities that have higher rates of asthma? They're closer to traffic. They're closer maybe to. To, to some kind of pollution source. Vulnerable populations are ones, like you said, you know, they have higher levels of, of health. Issues, they have lower education levels, they're in the second language. So we have an entire dashboard that my team personally and Tommy's gonna, is currently doing this right now. That we look at, so like Tommy looks at Thurston County, for example, and he can see what are areas that have high energy burden? What are areas that have lower education levels? And we go through and we choose on our team, a lot of different teams do this as well, but I'll speak for us. And we choose five of those named communities every year to focus our outreach efforts on. So that we're not just, you know, going around and talking to anybody. Because some people need that help more than others.
Hunter, that is awesome. Is there a way to pass on a message to Tommy that? I think Tom Water would love to see that or get some info, some deets, some data. If there's any way to collaborate better for services and communication and engagement?
Yeah, I can definitely let him know. Would that be you specifically that he would work with?
No, it'd be, not me. I think all of us would be interested, so I'm not going to assign John Down. But the mayor is our conduit.
Okay, just wondering what the next step would be for, for him to, to take in that regard.
Talk to John Down and the mayor. Thank you Hunter, I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Snyder.
Thank you so much, Mayor. So thank you Hunter, Christine, it's always good to see you. So thank you for the presentation. It's really encouraging how PSC is moving forward with our energy requirements. So I do have a question. I've asked this question before and I'm not sure if I ever got an answer on it, if I have. Forgive me for letting this slip through my brain. But as we move forward and all vehicles are going to be electrical. And of course, we're going to eliminate natural gas as well. My concern is, are we going to become like California? Where they have blackouts and brownouts and there's certain days you can only plug your electric vehicle in. Do we, are we going to be overwhelmed by the grid or what is PSD? Doing now in, within the future to prevent anything like that from happening?
Yeah, those are, those are really good questions. And something that we're going to be figuring out more and more as we move towards this clean energy transition. It's just like you said, it. It is for folks that don't. Understand, I try to describe this, this transition that we're taking, it's multifaceted. And it's something that this, this asset that we have, this largest piece of infrastructure that we've created, has never gone through, ever. We're looking at completely changing the way that we produce electricity. We're looking at complete, and then in addition to changing that, we need to produce more electricity to power our vehicles. And for those areas that we replace natural gas with electricity, even more electricity, clean electricity is going to be required for that. And we don't have all the answers as to how that's going to be done now. Certainly distributed energy resources play a role. Things like batteries, things like micro grids. But all of the details, we, we don't have yet. But there is an uncompromised marching order from our CEO that we can't compromise. Safety and reliability on our pathway.
Thank you for the information, I appreciate.
I'll add a little bit if I can, Charlie. I, I have learned a little bit more. PSC has an extensive long-term planning process. We look out two years, we look out, I think, five, ten, twenty years and we look at what our energy needs are going to be. And we have plans that we work on to try to make sure that we are going to be able to provide. As much energy as our customers need. So we've got entire teams that are working on that. So that we don't become another California with brownouts and blackouts. But I do remember us talking about that and I appreciate the question. I know it's close to your heart.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions? Right, well, great. Thank you so much for the information. This is very informative and. And look forward to more conversations in the future and, and more information, so I appreciate it.
Thanks Mayor.
Okay. Next item, and Tim instead of Brad is going to be presenting this is ordinance number oh twenty twenty-two dash. Oh one four rental housing registration. No, I'm sorry. My, I went down too far. Proposed us permanent supportive housing project. For seniors and John Down is going to start that one, sorry.
That's okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So if you recall, the city set aside of its ARPA funds. About twenty percent of those funds are five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. To do, to participate in a regional housing project. Back in December, on the thirteenth, you talked about how to spend those five hundred and fifty thousand. And agreed to designate or set aside two hundred and seventy-five thousand to present, to participate in the Franz Anderson. Permanent Supportive Housing Project in Olympia. And then set aside another two hundred and seventy-five thousand or the remaining two hundred and seventy-five thousand for a potential hotel conversion. In Tumwater. The Thurston County Housing Authority. Has put together a proposal, has an agreement with the property owner to do such a project that would provide. Housing for seniors. And then are, and would utilize our two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars as the local match or down payment. Towards a state grant for rapid rehousing money. So. This project is dependent on being able to obtain that money. We have with us this evening Craig Chance, who's the executive director of the Housing Authority. Craig's going to talk about this project. Answer your questions, describe how this project could work and sort of where it's at in the funding cycle. They have been doing some outreach to the businesses around the. Tumwater Inn and Suites, which is the facility they're looking at purchasing. And you have in your email, I don't, you may not have seen it yet because it was sent out late today. A copy of the message that they have been sending out to the, to the neighboring businesses. So with that, let me introduce Craig and he can, he can get us started.
Thank you, John, and thank you all of you for being here this evening. And I'm also joined by Tom Rossin, who is our. Director of Administration and Development. He's our numbers guy, so I'll be, want to get into the weeds of numbers. Tom will be able to assist you with those types of questions and. Right off the bat, I want to give special thanks to the staff at the City of Tumwater. And that would include John and Brad and the Police Department and the Fire Department because to get this process rolling with an application of Department of Commerce. We really had to scramble and I really can't emphasize enough that it wouldn't have happened without the assistance of the staff. In providing data that was essential in that process. A segue here with the prior presentation, appreciated PSC's presentation that Hunter had to share with us a few years ago. The Housing Authority with all the meters that we pay on, we converted to the green power option, sounds like similar to the City of Tumwater. So we're all on similar notes in regards to that. Not everybody's familiar with what the Housing Authority is, so let me just give a real brief description of the Housing Authority. The Housing Authority of Thurston County is a public entity. Sometimes people think we're a nonprofit, I feel like we're a business, but we are. A public entity where we sometimes I think it perceives a business, we operate without local operating dollars. We do receive like requesting in this presentation, sometimes capital grants. We run a large rental assistance program. It's about seventeen million dollars a year. It serves. Nineteen hundred or so households in all of Thurston County. We also offer some supportive services to our clientele and I believe we're the largest mission driven. Housing provider in the county. We own five hundred fifty-three below market rent. Units, we're currently building twenty-eight out in Olympia off of Lily Road. And just a shade over a year ago, we bought some property in Tumwater where we. Are in some pretty early stages of planning for development. And then along came this opportunity. So the Department of Commerce had a program and I did have the acronym, a little dialectic. Dialectic problem there in that letter to the neighbors. It's the Rapid Capital Acquisition, Rapid Capital Housing Acquisition Program. And it's a program that rolled out in the fall with the idea of buying properties like hotels. And doing pretty rapid acquisition and renovation into permanent housing. And in the fall, we went out and searched, we used the help of an established local commercial realtor. The very first property we identified to look at was the Tumwater Inn because. We knew that it was set up a little bit more like apartments in the sense that's ones and two bedrooms in it, so renovation might be easier. We got a very emphatic not interested response. So after a couple of tries, we finally accepted the not interested response. And then on December sixteenth, we heard that, well, actually there is interest. And they'd like to talk to you. And the challenge then became the application of commerce was due on January twelfth. So we had all the normal expected inefficiencies of the holiday season. And an ownership group that was on vacation several time zones away. On the other side of the world, literally. But we got it all done. Commerce was cooperative. Very generous in waiving certain requirements. very generous in waiving certain requirements to the initial application of things like appraisals that just would have been virtually impossible to complete in the time period. So they waived that. But we were able to do a number of the basic things they needed so that we're in there. A number of folks have asked us, there's a lot of needs out there, so why the focus on senior housing? Well, you have to pick a need, I guess. And it is literally true that hardly a day goes by. We don't hear from a senior in need. And it's can be really heartbreaking. Once in a while, it's successful. We heard one day I got a phone call from a medical provider, and the response was or the question was, I have a patient who makes $1,300 a month, has somehow managed to make ends meet in a studio apartment. It's a thousand a month. Recently, they received a rent increase to $1,300 a month. So now the narrow margin is a zero margin. It's impossible. Our thoughts as a medical provider are we could do nothing, and this person lives on the streets in his car, becomes a frequent visitor to the ER, very expensive, inhumane option. We could, I think, prematurely qualify the individual for assisted living. Again, it's an expensive option, and it's not really the morally right option, but it beats the first option. And what do you have? Well, fortunately, in this case, through conversation learned, the individual is a veteran. We do have some capacity and some veteran administration vouchers, so referral over to the VA Veteran Center hub, and then refer back to us how that process works, so that person can retain their housing. But not every story has that happy ending. There just isn't enough voucher money out there. National estimates are it's maybe one out of four income eligible households is served by the voucher program, maybe one out of five. So a lot of people are not served. Here's some numbers from our own resources. Right now, we have eleven seniors we define as people sixty-two or over. There are thirteen of those households that have a voucher who are actively looking for an apartment. Easier said than done, but they're actively looking. Meanwhile, on the waitlist, this is kind of a stunning number, there are 362 senior households waiting. And the nature of the beast is when the waitlist waitlist is currently closed, but when it opens, we get about four times as many people as can reasonably be put on the waiting list. And so like across the country, it's an electronic lottery, and about twenty-five percent of the applicants end up on there. So kind of a wet thumb in the wind estimate, there's probably 1,362 plus households in our community who can't afford to live decently in our community. That was the comments of a gentleman I think I put in the neighborhood letter that received a substantial rent increase notice of hundreds of dollars. And his comment was, I can no longer afford to live indoors in Thurston County, which is beyond sad. So there are a number of individuals and households that are sixty-two and above that need it. And the gray tsunami, it's sometimes called, or the silver tsunami. It's reportedly, if not the fastest, it's one of the fastest growing segments of the homeless. And far better to keep people who would be so vulnerable from ever being homeless. It's a nightmare if you're 20 years old. It's extremely vulnerable if you're in your sixties, seventies, and eighties. So the goal is to keep people from homeless. So that's why we think the need is there, what what the motivation is. And the property is under contract, working now with the financing and, you know, what's that property like? There are significant renovations that are going to be necessary. One will be energy. We'll go for heat pumps, get the baseboard heat out of there. But there are a number of things that need to happen. It is a two story, which is not ideal, but some of us that fit into that sixty-two plus demographic have been up and down the stairs. We would widen the stairs that make the steps so they're code compliant, and that'll be easier for people to navigate. So contrary to I think what some folks seem to think, not everybody sixty-two and over is necessarily suffering from a physical disability and can navigate that. It's not ideal, but it's, I think, manageable. There are people that live in it. This particular hotel is a hotel name, operates like a hotel, charges daily, weekly rates, but as a reality, a number of people, about ten households are in there for an extended period. And so we do have a relocation issue that we are morally and legally obligated to follow to ensure that those individuals and households find suitable housing. The property certainly has some upside, though. It's rich in amenities around it. There are two dental clinics, literally within about 150 feet. There are other healthcare providers within for what a number of people described as a reasonable walking distance, some modest restaurants and a convenience store. It is true, the grocery stores are close as a bird flies, but the freeways between the property and them, so it would either be a drive, a dial left, but it is an amenity rich neighborhood. So that benefits seniors. In terms of what the property is right now, I'm not sure quite how the diplomats, the State Department would word this, but we have an opportunity for some improvements. Chief Weeks could probably confirm the statement. We his department is one of the organizations or departments that provide us data. It's a property right now that has an unfair share of police calls. There in the last twelve months, looking at the whole year of 2022, there were a substantial dozens of police calls, and we have encountered that in other properties. We acquired Falls Point on Lee Street a few years ago, several years ago now. Similar situation, worked with the residents, brought the police call needs down to what's reasonable for a property of its size. We had a similar situation with a property in Lacey. So we're up to that challenge and taking care of neighborhoods as well as the individuals who live in our units. The 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 timing of all this, again, the application was accepted by Department of Commerce on the twelfth. They've had a couple of follow up questions, and they will post their goal is to post by February third, the applications that will continue in the review process. And they strive to make final funding decisions by February twenty eighth. So it won't be too long, and we're going to find out whether they have conditionally accepted, conditionally accepted could mean our fulfillment of requirements related to some of the renovation needs and appraisals and so on. So without me running too long, Tom, did you want to add a couple of comments here on rents and where we are with some of these processes, please?
Yeah, so the the property itself consists of twenty-four units. We've got one which could be classified as a studio. It doesn't have kitchen facility. So you know, there's some renovation that needs to be done there. But everything else, the property was originally built. The main building was built in nineteen sixty-seven, and it was actually started out as apartments. It was converted into an extended stay property. I don't know when, but it became the Shalimar Suites. And so there it actually lends itself very well for this this conversion from what would be referred to as a motel to a permanent housing, because they're really apartments. It also has a triplex near it, adjacent to it, that's part of the acquisition, part of the existing property that are two story, two bedroom apartments. So it lends itself really well to the conversion. The downside is it's in pretty rough shape. You know, we've had people there for long terms and through the COVID pandemic and you know, there's there's a lot of renovation that has to happen. We also learned that a change of use is going to require us to sprinkler the building, which will be an expensive venture. It's got baseboard heat, and one of the comments we heard from the existing manager and owner is that during the summer, because of the way it's oriented, it gets really hot inside those units. Dealing with the population that we're hoping to serve with this property, the senior folks, I think that's untenable. So you know, one of the things that we're proposing is that we put in what we refer to as mini splits, the ductless heat pumps, excuse me. So again, it's retrofitting those to to deal with that. So you know, we're probably going to have to replace everything interior wise to to bring them up to a standard. And the way we we did the performas and the development budget and and was that we're really trying to serve a population that doesn't necessarily have vouchers coming with them. So the way that we've priced these units is those at thirty percent of area median income, half of them are designed to to serve that population. So your your one bedroom rents are you know, in the low four hundreds. Trying to pull that up. Where is my? So we've got, you know, four hundred and seventy-nine for a one bedroom, five fifty-eight for a two bedroom, the three bedroom or the and then the other half will serve the fifty percent of area median income folks. So you're you're looking at, you know, $600 for a one bedroom, $900 for a two bedroom, and then the apartments, the the triplex units are bigger. We're thinking nine fifty. Those are well below what would be considered eighty percent according to the Housing Finance Commission, what they use. But you know, we're trying to to reach a population that doesn't have a voucher that are on a fixed income and and could have some rents that are affordable to those, you know, the thirteen hundred or the sixteen hundred, or if there's, you know, two people in the household in a two bedroom, you may have, you know, thirty-two hundred between the two averages of of Social Security so that they can have a decent place to live that they can afford. So that that's that's our goal is to to try to help those individuals. Like Craig said, we see we received multiple phone calls and emails of this this population that that it's extremely heartbreaking because, you know, they've worked all their lives. They're living on their social security. They found some place to live, and we've all heard what's happening to the rents in the area with private landlords. They're, you know, they were stuck for two years under the COVID pandemic, not being able to increase their rents. And when it was really lifted, that was lifted, a lot of them got very aggressive. And it's really burdened a lot of households, not just seniors, but a lot of other households. But this particular population is, you know, extremely vulnerable in in if they're having to live in their cars or live on the street. So I think it's a good project. And you know, if we can get the the award from from Commerce on this, I think we can make it work.
Don, did you have something? You had your hand up.
I was just going to ask a question either to Craig or to Tom about you know, this is described today and and is being planned as senior housing. How could that change over time? Like what would? I mean, is that likely that, you know, the Housing Authority says in ten years, yeah, we don't, you know, we don't want to have this be senior housing. We want it to be something else. Does the does the rapid rehousing program sort of assign it to be senior housing? Or how does I guess, how does that play?
Yes, it will have a forty year condition on it that it is for the purpose that it was intended. That's how they funded it. So and you know, with with a lot of our projects, whenever you're using certain funds, whether it be federal or state, they do put covenants on those properties that regardless of even who owns them, that 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 is with the property. So you know, we we would, we had no intentions. We've never actually done that, changed any use of any of our properties, but there is a there is a requirement with the funding source. And we have that on on several of our properties that, you know, for the period of affordability, they refer to it as it will remain for that purpose. And we will, you know, in this particular, we will report probably through Web R's, which we do with some of our other properties, that it's sort of monitored every year. We input that data into their system. They review it. And if people, you know, even if people get, you know, they somehow make more money and they they can afford more rent, there's no way we can increase the rent. So that's 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 one of the attributes of of the funding is that it is restricted to that purpose. So it will not judge. And and that's where we're really looking at that sixty-two and over fixed income population is, you know, we've felt for a long time that it's a lot of the funding that's coming out, whether it be federal or state, is is really looking at just homeless in general. It focuses a lot on families, which is good, but also singles, but there's no age restriction. So this particular property will be specific to that group, that population in those income categories. So like I said, it's it's a forty year period of affordability. So I'll be retired by then. So.
Thank you. My my second question is this has this project has been sometimes described as supportive housing or affordable housing or supportive affordable housing. To what degree is there a support component? Like, how how would you describe it?
I would call it light support. So these are individuals who generally don't have any major cognitive challenges. Like anybody getting a little older, they're not ready to join the Olympics, but that's severe challenges that need at least direct assistance from us. They may have caregivers who come in, as people do. But it's people whose major problem is they don't make enough money to, as the gentleman put it, live indoors in Thurston County. So light support for us means we have professional property managers who deal with issues that have to do with the functioning of the property, plumbing issues would be a good example. We have a housing stability unit who helps us with the residents. And if there are issues, a good example is a this wasn't a senior, it was a younger person, a single mom. And there was a alleged drug activity, at least there were police, a couple of arrests that happened near the the unit or people leaving it. So concerned of property management. And so we sent Housing Stability out there. And what they found out was the woman had developed a neurological condition that made it hard to function, including just getting into the bathroom easily. And she had done her own efforts, probably on Craigslist or some similar source finding caregiver, and she didn't find the licensed CNA types. And that was where the problems were coming from. So the effort then was made to connect her with the funding to get some CNA support and also to find a unit more suitable for her needs. And problem disappeared. So that's the kind of what we would call light support that we provide internally.
Councilmember Snyder. You're on mute.
I haven't heard that for a while, man. I thought I'd. Anyway, so thank you very much. It's exciting what the Housing Authority is doing addressing the seniors in our community. So you did mention there was a challenge that it's a two story complex. And we do know a lot of seniors, as they age, they're going to be limited on their mobility as far as going up the stairs. So I have two questions. I think it just requires one answer, but I'll leave that up to you. So how are you addressing those seniors confined to wheelchair or walker? And also, if you give, if you rent a property out on the second floor to one of these seniors, and they end up being unmobilized and can't go up those stairs, are they going to have to leave the complex because there's nothing, no way for them to get up and down the stairs? And what what is the ADA requirement on this property?
Well, it'll be certainly the ADA part with code and insignificant renovations will be working through that. But the practical side of it is in the first portion of your questions, you're absolutely right. People age and develop problems. So or if they're simply looking for something, we would say, well, to the first floor unit, then let's graduate to that. We also own other properties in the area. So I think we could easily make a priority. For example, if there's a first floor available, if one or the other nearby properties, it's satisfactory to the individual. Let's go there. We some of our properties like Falls Point, we are unusual even among our mission driven peers. We have a number of units that are under $800, and it's because they're lowly leveraged in the way they were financed years ago. And so we have, I think, some realistic options for people who need to graduate to a environment that's easier for them to navigate. But there's just no way around the fact that that is a drawback with this particular property, and it's not completely fixable.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. One other question. Is the doorway wide enough to get a wheelchair in? Or are you going to have to modify that?
Offhand, I don't know the answer to that question. They're fairly wide, but I don't know, Tom, if you've measured.
I haven't measured, but just by my recollection is they they would be wide and I haven't measured, but just by my recollection is they they would be wide enough for a wheelchair. We'd probably have to, you know, build a ramp. They do have a bit of a threshold. It's not high. Whatever the standard is, maybe a couple inches, but trying to think if I saw any ramps. In my visits there, I don't think I saw any. But yeah, it's it's a small threshold. We could build a ramp, but we'll we'll definitely look at that, you know, a little closer and see. You know, and and, you know, as we're talking about the the second story issue, the stairways are straight. I don't know if they make a commercial type elevator. But it might be something we look at, you know, in the future. One of the things that we did is we we were pretty aggressive in putting money into what we would refer to as maintenance reserves. So it might be something that, you know, we look at in the future. I mean, initially, obviously, we would look at putting anybody with mobility issues on the first floor. But you're right, you could you could get into a seven second floor. You're perfectly mobile. And then, you know, something happens where now you are restricted in your mobility. And you need either a first floor unit or like Craig said, is there another property close by that we could we could? You know, try to get them into an either an ADA unit or a bottom floor unit. So that they could they could access that. But yeah, it's it's a good question and I and I like that, you know, you know, something that we can look into is, you know, do they make commercial? Cause it's, it would have to be weather resistant that it would, you know, but it they are straight stairwells. There's no turns in them. So the stairs are straight. It's not like there's a landing and a and a turn. So it might lend itself nicely to that. But yeah.
Thank you both.
So about a council member Althouser, Dahlhoff, and then Jefferson.
Thanks, Mayor. I I was, I mean, with, we all know that there's massive demand for affordable housing. Especially for seniors who are on fixed incomes. But if so, if we have twenty-four new units, you know, you will be tasked with the challenging exercise of choosing who gets one of those units. Can you can you talk a little bit about how the eligibility process will work and and what you'll sort of look like? Or what the process will be for those prospective hopeful tenants that hope that they're one of the one of the lucky twenty-four? Or thirty-six, because you have two bedrooms, you know.
Sure, yeah, households, but obviously they'll have to have the income, have to fit the income qualification. And, you know, it's one of those interesting things. I don't think thirteen hundred households are going to apply. It's one of those kind of business concepts. People say, hey, there's all these waiting lists or getting into a daycare center. So the new daycare center opens up and the absorption period is usually a little longer than people anticipate. And so it will, we would certainly make those who have, they're in search right now. If it's thirteenth, time might be more, might be less, have a voucher. They're searching right now. We might identify them quickly if somebody looking for an opportunity. But we will advertise through area council for aging and the senior services and so on. To get a cast a broad net for people who are interested. And then the legitimately fair way to do this is first who comes, who's qualified. Will get the opportunity. I think with fair housing, there's really no other legitimate way to do that. But Michael, you're the lawyer. You can point out other ways, an alternative. So we're, you know, it's not perfectly defined. That's our perception of housing.
Yeah, I mean, like for for types of housing where someone has chronic or severe behavioral health needs. You know, they use the VISP at, I mean, this is clearly a very different population. We're not talking about people who have. Serious significant behavioral challenges. We're talking about people who have everyday fiscal challenges. Make ends meet most likely because they're on that fixed income and their rents have gone up. Which is the leading cause of houselessness is increasing rent. So.
Good clarification. Thank you.
Yeah. Councilmember Dahlhoff, and then I'll go to Councilmember Jefferson, then Councilmember Kathy.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, Craig and Tom. Thanks for being here. And I, my first question links with Michael. And I'm just wondering, in that scoring, is there a preference for those seniors in Tumwater that are potentially losing their housing? Can't afford their current housing so that they can stay in Tumwater? So I'm wondering if that has been part of the discussion of priority for Tumwater residents? And what that looks like or on your list, if you're seeing something like that, or at least have that discussion. Because we know we're getting emails from community members in manufactured home parks that their rent is going up. They can't afford it. I'm just wondering where that plays in. You don't have to answer that now, but just.
It's something to think about. And again, I think is your seatmate pointed out. You know, it's because they are facing the everyday challenge of fiscal problem. It's not behavioral type to score it through like a coordinated entry process. We also have to be mindful of the requirements of fair housing and how we could do that. Because you live in one area and not on this side of the border, i- is it feasible to use that as a screening criteria? So I will, I guess I'll defer on that question or speculates, something.
Just I just know as seniors that their quality of life, when they're able to stay in their neighborhood, that quality of life with the connections and.
Friends.
That and the to prevent Alzheimer's. I mean, so that was my first one. And the second one. It's maybe not so much for Craig and Tom, but we received an email today at one fifteen from a community member. And I'm wondering, John and the mayor, if that was forwarded to Craig to give him some insight of the comments, right? And is and is anyone going to reply to?
No, I'm I'm happy to visit with that individual or individuals or anybody else. There is an individual that has a business that's extremely close to the property called said individual. Said individual at first wasn't particularly happy with me because the perception maybe we were building a shelter. That was going to create extra challenges, but that individual had a very long conversation. And I think the business owner was much happier after the visit. At least less concerned.
Thanks. I mean, it goes back to, thanks, Craig. Appreciate that. It goes back to John's question about permanent supportive housing, affordable housing. That no monk creature can get confusing even for us. So appreciate that clarification and someone reaching out.
Yeah, and for all of you, you know, again, a reminder, it's all the doors always open for this project or others. If you would like to come and visit us, take a little tour of maybe two or three Tumwater Housing Authority properties. We'd be happy to, we'd be real excited to show you around a little bit. But we aren't, you know, not the shelters are bad. There's clearly a need for it, but we're not in the shelter business. That's not our lane. We're not the experts. What we are good at is permanent affordable housing.
Great. Councilmember Jefferson, did you still have a question?
No, Mayor. Michael and Leah just snatched my question.
Perfect. Councilmember Kathy and then Councilmember Althouser.
Thank you. I just have a quick question. Hi, Craig.
Hello.
When you quoted the rents, the different, you know, rents for different properties. I guess this would be an overall thing as far as are utilities included in that or will utilities be extra?
The water is included, the property, because it's strangely enough set up like an apartment, does have individual electric meters.
So it's the rent you're quoting plus.
Yeah, it it'll be, you know, the the garbage sewer and water is included in, you know, it's part of the rent. But it's power is separate.
Some of you might know, a lot of private market rate places now have a surcharge, so the rent may be a given amount. And then they add an extra charge that represents unmetered type services like water, sewer, garbage. We don't do it that way. It's those things are included.
Rinse the rent.
Well, I just think about, you know, utilities keep going up.
Yeah, that's the, that's why, oh, it's partly, as Tom suggested, comfort with the heat pump, many splits, whatever system the experts designate is appropriate. But they they can dramatically reduce the energy costs.
Yeah. Thanks for that. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Broadhauser.
Yeah, I thi- I think this is probably actually a question for John. But we we, like, let's say that Commerce approves this and we were to approve funding. We wouldn't have to change any laws to accommodate this. This is already perfectly within the zoning that's been long established for for this area, right?
Correct. Yeah, it fits within the zoning, you know, as as Tom and Craig have said. You know, there may be some building code, energy code issues that come with the change of use. But with regards to zoning and environmental review and all that, it's it's consistent with our zoning.
Okay. And in terms of the the funding that we were discussing, that is all federal ARPA that we're discussing. That's not local general fund dollars. That's not home fund dollars at the county. All of that is for our share that we're discussing. That's all federal ARPA money from pandemic relief, correct?
Correct. You you set aside a certain percentage of that federal money. And that, you know, this would be the project that receives a portion of it, the, you know, the numbers we talked about.
Okay, thanks.
And it's an add-on to that, the Housing Authority, and our budget has funds going in there also. Some of our discretionary funds and certainly will be taking some entrepreneurial risk, if you will, for the appraisals, environmental assessments. And all the preliminary things.
Yeah, we we've got, yeah, there was a five percent match requirement. And so we filled the gap between the ARPA funds from Tumwater. So and we'll, like Craig says, entrepreneurial risk is that we have to spend this money for the the application. And, you know, if they don't approve the the funding from Commerce, then, you know, it's money spent. And that's part of what we have, we do. So.
So part of the reason why we're having the conversation today is at some point in the near future, we're going to need something official from the city of Tumwater. I don't know if that's a letter of support or a resolution. Do you know, Tom or Craig, what we?
Yeah, if we were following the strict letter of the application requirements. It would be a quote conditional commitment from the city of Tumwater to allocate these two seven, two hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. What we did with the kindness of Commerce in waiving some things is surmised from the work session. Where the council, the consensus seemed to be in a work session of providing the two seventy-five. And the what was perceived reasonably is unlikely event, a project like this would come along at the last hour. And so we presented that, but I can picture at some point they're going to say rather soon. Is there an actual commitment or is it a generalization? So it's important to, right now, as I describe it, to use the overall base, overused baseball analogy. They accept their application, run first base, but we'll have to, we need to keep providing other things to move ourselves to home plate.
So my ask to the council would be, you know, we we would prepare a letter of support for this project. That Craig would have in his pocket as he runs from first to second. And I would ask if there's any objections from the council to us doing that.
I'm not seeing any objections.
Okay, great. Thank you.
That sounds great. And one thing I might add is that, you know, people were talking about getting to the grocery store. Bus thirteen goes by there and goes stops right at Safeway, so they don't even have to go across the road. So it's amazing transportation that's available in that.
Almost outside the front door. That's, you are correct.
So that 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 one is, you know, great for public transportation. Any other questions? I really appreciate it, and I think this is really great to clarify a lot of the questions that had been coming. Because it had come so fast, it was hard to get, you know, the information out. So I really appreciate it. And I also appreciate what you do for the community. It's it's crucially important. And we're glad that we can partner with you on this.
Almar's been a great partner over the years.
Yep.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care, everybody.
All right.
Thank you, Tom. Thanks, Craig. Thank you.
All right, since I tried to rush the agenda apparently, now we're going to do ordinance number oh, twenty twenty-two dash oh, one. For rental housing registration and. And I have Mike Matlock up for that.
Good evening. Trying to share a screen. I'm hoping it's showing up. So before you tonight, let me know if it's not. Is the rental housing registration ordinance? And let me just. Advance one slide here. So there's a couple of policy decisions the council's previously made to get us to the point here tonight for this. One of which is the resolution you passed in two thousand eighteen, action nine there was asking city staff to review measures. To help renters access housing and stay housed. And in September of twenty-one, the council adopted the Tumwater Housing Action Plan, which included an establishing a rental housing registration program. And that was integrated in with the resolution as well. And the council prioritized, as you recall, three actions on March twenty-second, which included an ordinance to address rental housing registration. Which what is before you tonight. And the other two were a pair of ordinances that addressed tenant protections and business taxes and licenses and regulations. And also the third one then was a scope for a contract, the dispute resolution center. The first of those ordinances you passed in December of last year. And the latter here, a scope for contract, the dispute resolution center for tenant landlord conflict resolution. Has actually been prepared on our end and has been sent off to the dispute resolution center for their review. So that's in process as well. Staff looked at a number of housing registration programs around the region, briefly listed some of the ones we've looked at there. And the Housing Action Plan, as I mentioned, action five D has us asked us to establish a rental registration program. To improve access to data and sharing information with landlords. The purpose of this program really is just that. It is pretty limited in its scope. It's meant to allow us to know who's out there and how we can contact them. So that we can let them know both the legislative priorities that the council passes and also the state as well, if we choose to do so. And also in that resolution that you passed, it also addresses that same issue and creating a list of landlords for communication. So this is the method when we can do that. So this ordinance then would establish a rental registration program for tenants that are. For, excuse me, for rental properties that are over five units in size, five units or more in size. So if I own ten duplexes, this doesn't apply to me. But if I own apartment complexes of five units or more than it would. So the program really just attaches on to our existing business license application form that we have within the city. All currently, all businesses in the city need to have a city business license. And that the charge for that is fifty dollars initially, and then the renewal annually is twenty dollars per year. That, so we just use that same program. So it's fairly efficient in staffing wise. The difference is, if it's a regular business, there is a B and O tax that is assessed on those businesses. That B and O tax would not apply to this program. This would be just a rental registration program, and we would use it for that purpose. Currently, there are seventy-six multifamily developments in the city that have five or more units. So that's how many we're talking about. If the council chooses at a later date to expand that program to all rental properties. We could expand this program to do that. It will get a little bit more difficult. We're still kind of thinking about how we would actually do that. We probably could get at duplexes fairly easily, but if there's, there's obviously a lot of people that just rent their single family home. Maybe they only own the one structure in Tumwater. It'd be a little tougher. We'd have to work on that, but that isn't a part of this program here tonight for you. And also, if you wanted to expand this program in the future, you could expand that to a rental, excuse me, a regular inspection program for rental properties. Which many jurisdictions do. This does not do that tonight either. That would be a more substantial commitment of resources to do that. But that'd be something you could take up in the future. If you wish to do, you could, you could use this program to expand in that manner. So this next schedule is, if you are so so inclined, you can move this, your regular city council meeting on February seventh. There is not a public hearing required for this action, so you could put it for consideration or you could put it on consent. And this has been a general government committee. And this has been a general government committee, the general government committee has reviewed this. And so I would, I would ask if there's anything they would like to add or expand on what I've said, and I can also stand for questions as well.
Any additional comments, Councilmember Altuser?
Uh, thanks. Mayor, I I guess I would just sort of frame this. As kind of the the logical. Next step in terms of we we passed a few ordinances that. Are about what it looks like to be a tenant in the city, and now. You know, I I do sort of see this as the next step in our due diligence to make sure that we are properly informing. The landlords in our city of the rules so that they're aware of those things. But I do have, just sort of based on, we did receive like an email from someone who expressed some concerns about this, so I do just have two quick clarifying questions for you, Mike. So when it comes to applying for a business, like I'm trying to visualize. Potential costs that a landlord would associate with complying with registration, so it's only if you have five or more units, which means it's pretty much an apartment complex. Like this is someone is in the business of doing this as opposed to probably a mom and pop that just has one unit or something like that. But can you give us a sense of the process? Like, how long, what does it actually take to fill out an application for a business license? Is that onerous? Do most people, like I imagine you do not need. An attorney, like an attorney is probably not required for you to fill out a business license, but can you give us a sense of the challenges or the simplicities that are required by that process?
Yes, it's it's not an onerous process at all. You don't need to retain an attorney. It's just an application that each business fills out on their own. They submit that into the city and we review it through a company, it comes into to the finance department. And is routed to other various departments to have a look at, and it is not an onerous process. The charge is fifty dollars for that first initial. Application. And then the annual renewal is twenty dollars a year, but it's it's not, it's not a difficult process, and it doesn't take very long to to accomplish that.
Okay, and then then one more follow up. Um, so this ordinance that that was approved and recommended by the general government committee and the one that we reviewed for for this meeting tonight. That contains no requirements for inspections of any kind. So if in the future, that was a future council decided that that was the direction the city should head in. We would have to pass a new law that allowed and required inspections, correct? There's nothing in here. That gives us the ability to administratively do that. We would have to pass another ordinance, right?
That's that's absolutely right. It's 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 a whole program. It's it's quite an effort. And as I mentioned, we would need to have some discussions about how to adequately staff that to do that. We don't have. We don't have staff currently available to do that, so it would be a whole additional program. It would take an additional. Uh, council ordinance passage to do that.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
Right. Mike, can you stop, uh, unshare or?
I can.
Yeah. I was having trouble seeing if anybody was trying to raise their hand. All right, any other questions?
So I have, I have, I have a question.
Okay, Councilmember Gavi.
Thank you, Mayor. So if I. Have, if I own an apartment and I have, and I register. In a midway between a registration, uh. Requiring a. A renewal, and I sold the property to somebody else, and that person that buys the apartment. Would they, are they required to? Submit an application? As if. That where decision was never done because they are new. Or would they be allowed to use of whatever time is left of the registration? And then when the time comes for them to do the renewal, to now register. In their owner name. Thank you.
Good question, and I don't know the answer to that. I'm wondering if John or Troy's on it, they know the. That the answer to that question with the building of a business license. I would imagine that they probably would need to apply for their own business license, and they probably couldn't use the unexpired one, but that's, I'm not certain about that.
So in other words, we should have, I don't, I'm just saying this. If we don't yet have that language. And spread that language, we should have a part of our language that regardless of when you bought the property, when that, when that license was transferred to a new owner. That license is not transferable. In other words, you wish you, if if I bought the property, given my own scenario, you will have to go back and. Register a new.
I can, I can help answer that question. A business license is non-transferable.
Okay, good, thank you.
That was easy. Uh, council members for that.
Oh, thank you. I'm sure this, they asked this question, like, general government, but why five? Why not? Why are we starting with five? What was the the rationale as far as just five or more instead of looking at? Like, single family or smaller, smaller units?
Uh, maybe I'll, since since I was there for the discussion chair, and I'm happy to answer that one. We did five because that's really when apartments start, like you have four plexes and smaller. Once you get five, that really means you have a apartment building. Those are the readily, the most easy to identify, so I think it would. Like, it becomes, as you get to smaller and smaller units, it becomes more complex to even identify where those are and then who owns them, so that we can then do the necessary outreach to those business owners. We also thought that five, when you look at apartments, has more of a commercial orientation to it, like. I think there's a lot of people in the community that own, you know, one unit that they use as a rental as kind of a. To use a millennial term, kind of like a little side hustle, but is not, is not their primary business venture. But when you kind of are talking about a five unit apartment complex, that more means. Signifies that you're dealing with a more legally sophisticated party. That I think is sort of the easier folks for us to work with at first and then tend to see how that program progresses and takes off.
And then. Oh, the the outreach, when you guys were working on developing. Did you talk to apartment owners, some of the bigger complexes already have had these conversations that this was in the works? Or were they part of the process in developing this?
I think Brad did some outreach in development of this, and one of the other things we also did was talk to some cities that have also done this. Like Lacey has a registration program, Aberdeen has a registration program. I think one of the other cities is Burian, and so we sort of talked to them and learned about their experiences as well. And what was successful, I think that's what sort of informed us to to kind of start off with what we think is achievable so that we can have proof of concept. And then reevaluate in the future to see if there's lessons learned that we can then grow upon.
And so like the basic thought is that they will, the apartment owners will apply for a business license and then. To new tenants or tenants, they'll be providing, required to provide information that. Do we provide the information or will it be online, you know, to to their tenants, to give them, you know, updates or, you know? I don't know, you know, I'm not sure what you're like, what types of things they need to know about.
Like, there's already, like, state laws that require that landlords provide certain things, like, you know, the mold form when you get a new apartment and you get, you get a form that. Says stuff about mold, right? Like, that's a state law that requires that. There's other things that state law also requires. What what we did as a council. Was more say like what things need to be noticed, and a lot of those things are just going to be in the lease document as opposed to a document that's produced by the city or something along those lines. So like effectively, I I think like the goal of this program. Is to notify, so that we can actually have like a robust conversation with the landlords in the community about what we want rental housing. To look like so that they have the information that they need to be informed about, so then the tenants can also be informed too. Like, like. I I don't really see this necessarily as like a regulatory program. It's really more of a means to have a clear line of communication between the cities and the. And some of our, like, bigger landlords in the city.
And then I guess I'm curious too on the, um. Having part of my daytime job is, you know, you get people to complain about their apartments and all and and their living conditions, and so will that be something that will be in place? Um, as far as, or is that, how will that, any complaints or anything like that be handled? That, is this part of the process as well?
I I don't think so. Mi- Mike, do you want to take that one? I I think that's kind of beyond the scope of this. I I think that's probably more where, you know how we're talking about doing the contract with dispute resolution center? That's really more of the avenue for these, for those kinds of situations rather than this, yeah.
That's, that's exactly right, and that is, that is. In process right now. It won't be very long until we have that contract in place.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Sorry, now I'm on mute. Cath, Councilmember Kathy, did you have a question?
I was spending those moments trying to lip read, see what you said. My question is, if a person has a fourplex and on the fourplex. Land, all all one piece of property, they have two other rentals, does that make it more than five? Or six? It would make it six.
No, it it doesn't. It would have to be a unit of five units or more. They could have multiple, they could have multiple, for example, they could have three. Four unit complexes, and this would not apply to them.
So they have to be contiguous, is what you're saying? They have to be connected?
They do. They have to be any, any, any unit.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, so my next question is going to be, do we want this on consideration or consent?
I'm okay, I'm okay with consent. But I'm also in general government. We spent a lot of time on this, and I'm super excited about this, so that's why I'm happy with consent.
All right. Do, do we have anyone who does not want it on consent? Councilman Kathy?
I'm, I'm just wanting to say caution since we've had, you know, response from the community and concern about this and whatever. I'm thinking consent looks like we're maybe concealing or rushing or. Something. I'm just thinking about, about that.
Uh, Mayor, can I respond?
Yes.
I hear you, Joan. I agree with you, and also we can reply to that one email I've seen, and that should be satisfactory. So whatever you all decide, I'm okay with consent, but if you want to have it as a consideration. By all means, but we've gone through this a lot, it's been posted a lot, so I think it should be on consent.
So what I suggest is we could put it on consent, and then if there's something that arrives. Between now and when we have council meeting, we can pull it and put it under consideration, so.
Yeah, I I think that makes sense, because, I mean, it's not going to be a public hearing, it's just a consideration, so if someone makes a comment, it would be during the public comment portion anyway. Whether it's on consent or if it's on consideration, so it. Think like having it on consent, and if we get. A lot of concern or request, we can just pull it and then have a deeper conversation about our reasoning for why we support it or don't.
Hey, looks like we're having agreement with that. So we can go ahead and move that forward. All right, so now we are to the mayor's city administrator report. John, do you have anything?
Nope.
That was a no?
That was a no.
Oh, that was quick. Okay, so I don't believe I have anything either, so with that, we do have an executive session. Uh, and this is in regards to a real estate acquisition pursuant to R C W forty two point three oh point one one oh. Sub one, sub B, and. I've been informed that we anticipate that this will be fifteen minutes. Uh, so we have another link to go to executive session, and then we will come back. To this, um, meeting, and then we will adjourn the work session, so with that, I will recess this meeting. For fifteen minutes, and then we will come back.